And, uh, would you like to join us in pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Could we have roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Charles Durin, absent. Charles Ladd?
Here.
Nick LeFakas?
Here.
Mary Scott, absent. Virginia Higley?
Here.
Ken Nelson?
Here.
Linda DeGray?
Here.
John Petronella, absent. And Richard Suzak's here.
I'd like to make a motion to seat Linda Gray as chairperson tonight in Charlie Durin's absence.
Second.
All in favor?
Everybody in favor?
Don't do it.
Okay.
For fire evacuation, in case of a fire, there are two ways to exit the chamber. One, to my left, exit through the council chambers, to the doors, turn left, walk down the stairs, and exit the building, or to the rear of the chambers. And in either case, once outside the building, walk a safe distance away from the building. Okay. Staff reports? It's okay. It's okay. We got...
Sorry about that. After the last meeting we had discussing that, we, the Planning and Zoning Commission decided to send that to the courts. And our attorneys have done so, so it is awaiting a date, as far as I know. So...
Okay. Approval of the minutes for October 24th?
I move to approve the minutes of October 24th.
Second.
Okay. Any corrections, discussions on this? Hearing none. All in favor? All right. So it's four, six of us? All right.
So far.
Thank you. So far. All right. Um, public participation. I gotta find it. Hold on. I know, it's a full speech. I gotta find it. Oh. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Anybody in the public like to speak? Anyone in the public like to speak? Anyone in the public like to speak? Hearing no one. We will close public participation. Bond releases, PH 2875, one, yeah, 1551 King Street bond release for site restoration in the amount of $132,300 for erosion sediment control. And, um...
Forty-four hundred.
Forty-four hundred, and a landscape bond of $8,000.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we release the bonds for 151 King Street. And the amounts are $132,300 for erosion sedimentary control, $4,400 for... Wait, let me start again. Let me start again.
Yeah.
Okay. For site restoration, the amount is $132,300. For erosion and sedimentary control, the amount is $4,400. And for landscaping, the amount is $8,000.
Second.
Okay. And everything has been approved by the town. Okay?
Correct.
Any questions, concerns? All right. And all those in favor? Okay. Six, zero, zero. Okay. Bond approval, PH 2885, 1683 King Street, as requests for a release of erosion and sediment control bond of $2,500 and landscaping bond of $1,870.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion that we release the bond for PH 2885, 1683 King Street. And the amounts are for erosion and sedimentary control, $2,500, and landscaping bond of $1,870.
Second.
Okay. And these are also okayed by the town? Okay?
Correct.
What about this notice of violation from Rick?
So, um...
There's a letter here with notice of violation from Rick Rochelle.
It was dated May 13th. They didn't have a...
Actually, 7/24 it was dated.
Oh, okay. Oh. All right. You're right. Missed that.
Says, uh, notice of cancellation of the bonds.
Right. But I think that that was corrected. I think they were just giving you the history of what's happened to date.
Yeah. There's an email that came in on October 23rd from Rick Rochelle. And he was asking John Kabibow to just review the borings. They had to determine whether the pavement was placed according to town standards.
That was okay. It was because they took the bondings off. They canceled the bonds. Have they been reinstated? That's the question.
That is my understanding. I don't think they would be promoting...
I don't see any letters saying so.
They wouldn't be suggesting to release it if it doesn't exist. So, that's, I kinda came in on this at the last minute. So, that's my understanding of that letter.
My understanding of Rick's letter is...
It says he submitted the site restoration bond.
Would it be a problem if we waited one more meeting and got the confirmation so that everyone here could be comfortable with it's been done correctly and there was a bond put back in place?
So, if there's not a bond in place, we're gonna make them put a bond in place to release a bond?
No. But we don't need to release a bond if there's no bond in place. It's kind of redundant.
We have to release their liability for the bond.
Right. But if there is no bond...
There's a violation in place.
Right.
The memo says that the surety bond was submitted for site restoration. And after submitting the site restoration bond, the applicant requested the release of the soil and erosion control and the landscaping surety bond. So, the other two are, the site restoration bond is still in.
Right. Because we released one a couple meetings ago, but we didn't release these because of the question over the blacktop. And I was concerned that if they had to dig up the parking lot again because it was insufficient, why would we release it? And that's why we held off. So, we did release the other one, too.
No, this is not the blacktop. The blacktop was for the other one. We just approved.
Was for 1551. This is for 1683.
This one is for Inning Locking Connections LLC on, uh...
A little further down.
Okay.
If you'd like to hold off on this, we could just put it on for the next meeting. I mean, if you want clarification, that's up to you, though.
It says...
It's up to the commission now.
It says, "On October 15, the applicant submitted a new surety bond in the amount of $12,900 for site restoration from the U.S. United States Fire Insurance Company." And he checked with the insurance company and verified that the surety bond was in effect.
Okay. I don't have that with me, so...
No, that's fine. It's on the second page.
This is, on a document dated November 14.
Oh, okay.
It was on the tape.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. In that case, let's do it.
Okay. All in...
What? Are we approving it?
Well, that's, are we...
Use it...
Somebody needs to make a motion?
It's been a motion...
You made a motion, and it's seconded. We're just discussing.
To approve it, so we're still...
Did you withdraw it?
Well, I haven't withdrawn yet.
If you want to vote now, then we can vote. No. She just said they got a letter saying it's been...
Right. It's in your packet.
Yeah. It's in the packet.
It's the second page after the resolution.
Okay.
And it says that the site restoration bond was put back. And subsequently, they have requested the release of these two bonds.
Okay. All right. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of, all right, six, zero, zero. Okay. All business. Public hearing, 2946, 28 Maple Ave. We've got something here on our desk for another extension or...
Yes, ma'am. Oh, go ahead.
I have...
Aren't they out of time?
They're asking for an extension.
Right. But didn't we give them all the extensions they could have?
They need, they'll need to have action taken at the December 12th meeting. So, they supplied the, some of the information we desired, which is in your packet, the architectural drawings for the floor plans. But there were no dimensions on them. So...
Didn't we also request a site plan for the parking?
I believe so.
Yeah. But we didn't get any of that.
Right. Mr. Fiori is actually out of state, so we were contacting him. And he tried to get his architect out there before this evening, and it wasn't gonna happen. So...
So, my concern is these plans that he has submitted to move forward, on the first page, it says that the existing foundation is to remain. He has a ceased work order on the building. He's continued to work on it. Not only has he ripped off the front of the building, he's also pulled the foundation out and had caution tape along the town sidewalk to the cellar hole. No structure or anything to stop anybody from falling in this hole. There's nothing to stop the sidewalks or road from undermining. And here's a brand-new piece of paper he submitted that says the foundation's gonna remain. Well, it's already gone. So, he has...
Plus, you can't read it anyways.
Well, but he's gone above and beyond, you know, the town, saying, you know, "Straighten this out." He continues to work. He says he's out of town, but yet work still keeps happening over there. So, we don't have the paperwork that you guys have just mentioned. The paperwork he has submitted is incorrect. So, he needs to resubmit it. So, I can't support an extension for something that he's just, he's not giving us what we want, and he still feels he can continue to work. And, you know, that was a grandfathered lot. And he pulled that foundation out right along the road. You got some serious issues that could happen here. Not only the safety issue of what's going on there, but that's my concern with this whole thing, and I'm not willing to extend it.
We can reject it without...
Prejudice.
Prejudice. And he can reapply.
Right.
Yeah.
Because he's out of time anyways.
No, he's not out of time. He's requesting an extension.
I kind of agree with Ken. I didn't realize it was that extensive, but...
It wasn't. It wasn't two weeks ago.
Right. Right. But it is now, you're saying. And my thing is, you just mentioned the magic word "grandfathered." If you take away something that's there, I would think you'd have to conform to current regulations, correct, Laurie? Or am I incorrect?
That is the normal course of action. However, this was nonconforming. So, now, without the survey...
Thank you. And my challenge is, I agree with Ken on this wholeheartedly. Because he took the foundation out, he's made a nonconforming lot into something that wasn't there before. So, now he's gonna have to come back and do the, either that or get a variance. He's gonna either have to get a variance or just have to comply with the standards, although it is Thompsonville, so. But...
It's being deceitful when you say that the existing foundation's remaining to get around that.
Yeah. My concern was there weren't any dimensions that I could figure out. So, okay. Well, that's, that was my feeling. I really, I'm not gonna be able to support the extension because work has not stopped, according to Ken. And I'm sure Ken has been over there after I saw it last week, the meeting before. So, I don't think we should reward bad behavior and putting the town in danger. I was, that's a poor choice of words. My, what I meant to say was that it makes the town liable. It opens up liability because it's right by the sidewalk. And that's the town property. So, that's my concern.
So, the building official and the zoning enforcement officer are taking care of the violations. But you shouldn't be basing whether or not somebody should be extended or not based on violations, even...
I'm not. I'm basing it on misinformation that he supplied.
However, and he may have the opportunity to correct the plans, which is what we've already requested.
Right. But how many days does he have?
Just extending it for one more time.
How much longer does he have?
In days.
The next, you'd have to open the hearing and take action by the next meeting. Or close it by the next meeting, yeah.
And you feel, in your professional capacity, that he can remedy all the things that Ken has brought up in that time period?
At this point, we've offered extensions before. And it's kind of like, we may as well just give him the last chance. I mean, it, you know, what happens is, then if you deny him the extension, he's gonna come back with the same stuff. And it's just gonna prolong the whole process. So...
If he comes back with the same stuff, he wouldn't, never mind.
Yeah. I understand exactly what you're feeling right now. I totally do.
It's frustrating.
It is frustrating. It's frustrating for us. Because we asked for the information, and we got half of it. And you're right, Ken, this is no longer accurate. Because as of two days ago, this foundation no longer exists.
Just, my concern is, we try to set an agenda to follow it. We have JFK on the agenda, which is a very, very big project for the town of Enfield. And by us rejecting this with no prejudice, it moves him to the back. He's made the town wait for a month and a half. He's continued to do work. He's not following protocol. So, we're gonna penalize JFK by moving them second, when they're doing everything they're supposed to do. Instead of making JFK wait for him, why don't he wait for JFK to have their time on the floor? And that's where I have a problem with this.
Well, my problem is, I hear what you're saying, but Laurie feels, in her professional capacity, that we need to grant this and then finish it off. So, even though I am dragging my feet, I probably will vote to go with the December one, only because I'm, you know, bowing to your professionalism.
I'm always trying to give the benefit of the doubt.
When did he submit these plans, Laurie?
Uh, well, they...
11/4/19.
Yeah, it must have been last week, at least, because they're in your packet.
The day they went out, I was told.
So, these were drawn after the foundation was removed? And he submitted them?
No. The foundation was just moved this last week, I think.
It's been going on for over a week.
Okay. That's what I was told.
Okay. So...
So, it is your purview to decide whether to grant an extension or not. However, that's up to you.
Again, I agree with Ken in terms of, you know, that there is a significant amount of violations that are going on. Unfortunately, I also agree with Ms. Witten that, you know, we could give him the extension. And then, what we can do is actually act at our next meeting. And if he doesn't satisfy all our concerns and all our, you know, recommendations, then we should take action. You know, I think that, you know, we could, then he goes back to the end of the line at even a later date. So...
Then he's rejected.
Well, without prejudice, though.
No, you don't...
Not next meeting, he's rejected.
It's just rejected. And why don't we just move along? I move that we approve the request for the hearing extension for TB 19507, 28, no. Okay.
It's public hearing 2946.
Thank you. Public hearing 2946, till the next meeting, which is December 12th.
12th.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. It's moved in second. Any more discussion? All right. All those in favor of giving the extension? Okay. And all those against? There's two against, 4-2. So, it's 4-2-0. Okay. New business. Site plan review, SPR 1796, 130 Elm Street. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Charles Ladd?
Here.
Nick LeFakas?
Here.
Virginia Higley?
Here.
Ken Nelson?
Here.
Linda DeGray?
Here.
And Richard Suzak's here.
Okay. Please name an address and give us your pitch, what you wanna do here.
Thank you, Chair, and fellow commission members and staff. My name is Stan Glantz. I'm Vice President of Development and Construction with KPR Centers. We have a business address of 254 West 31st Street in New York, New York. And we purchased State Line Plaza just over a year ago. And it may not seem as though, being new owners, that we're very familiar with the town, traffic patterns, how difficult it is to lease certain space. But as many of you know, on the board, on the commission, I've actually been involved with this property for, well, over probably 25 years, as both Scott and David have, as well as my consultants previously. And together, we sought and we secured approvals to modify the center from what it used to be, Mott's Supermarket, many, many moons ago, along with Ames Department Store, into much of what you see today from the Auto Zone North. And then, subsequent developers, who we sold to, Samuel's Group, they put in Costco, which we had actually teed up, and continued to redevelop the center. And then, our most recent predecessor, Brixmore, was able to bring Panera to the center. It's our goal that we continue those improvements and continue to make the center better and better and better. Many moons ago, we attempted to get access onto Elm Street, because we thought it was very, very important for the center to have access on both sides of its street frontage. Back then, it was not approved for one reason or another. The state was in a different mentality. But we have seen over our careers that the most successful shopping centers and places of business do well when they have easy access. And in this world of internet sales, we need to make our shopping centers as convenient and as accessible as possible, and give those who are coming and going to the shopping center as many choices as they can have in a safe environment. So, what we'd like to do is to propose what you see before you today, a right-in, right-out-only on Elm Street. As much as we'd like to have full access, we know left turns would be a nonstarter here. But we do feel that the access that we're designing, with its slight S-curve, bringing shopping center customers into the center and then out, would work quite well. And it would be safe. And I'll let my consultants speak to the safety and the design in more detail. But I did want to point out that the North Strip Center, which is really one of the things that that entrance is gonna help the most, has always been difficult to lease, to continue to retain tenants in. And even if we get a lease, and it's a five-year lease, they leave before the five years, or they leave at the end of five years. And we are currently sitting with a building that's just under 20,000 square feet. And over 13,000 square feet are vacant. And we have one tenant in that 13,000 square feet that's month-to-month, and probably won't make it more than another six months. So, we know that this access will be seen as a real plus for prospective tenants that we are hoping to talk to in the next weeks and months and years, to get them into the center and retain them long-term. What we'd like to do is have David and Scott talk about the technical aspects now. But I did want to mention that in subsequent applications, we hope to replace the pylon sign as well with a multi-tenant pylon sign. We think that'll help our tenants overall. And the irony is, your regulations require the street address be placed on the sign. So, it'll say 130 Elm Street, but nobody can come in from Elm Street except for the dumpster guys and the delivery guys that are going behind the building. So, we'd like to see if we can't get a right-in, right-out approved, and really help the center thrive and continue its success. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to you guys.
Good evening. I'm Dave Zax with F.A. Hesketh Associates. And as Stan was pointing out, I was going through the file on this site. It was in 1994, we were before you. It's hard to believe, but it's true, with the first major renovation, which included Home Depot. And I was thinking back at that time, the discussions during the public hearing. And I know the number-one concern of, it was the owner at the time was Conover, was restricted access to the north end of the center. In particular, also was the fact that, as part of that renovation, we closed the median on Freshwater Boulevard at the north end. So, if you, I'm sure you're all familiar with the center. But when you come out at the driveway next to Friday's, and Friday's, I put up an aerial photo with the driveway superimposed on top of it. The Friday's Restaurant is right there on the left-hand side, the white roof you see. When you come out at the driveway next to Friday's, in front of this retail portion that Stan was talking about, that's a restricted right turn-in, right turn-out on Freshwater. So, if you're coming in from Elm Street to get back to Friday's, and in this 20,000-square-foot building that Stan's talking about, basically, you go south down Freshwater, all the way to the intersection at the mall driveway, where we installed a new traffic light back 25 years ago. And then, you drive into the center, and you'll see the new Panera Bread on your left-hand side. And then, you have to drive through the shopping center in some fashion to get all the way back here, get back to that north end. Most of that traffic now, particularly with Panera Bread in that portion of the parking lot, is going to be driving across the face of PC Richards and Home Depot to get up to this part of the site. So, the idea was, to gain some access to here, was not to even think about breaking the median again at Freshwater Boulevard, but to look at putting in at least a restricted driveway here, back up to Elm Street at this location. So, what we've done is, we're proposing a right turn-in and a right turn-out. And in the design, we're looking at adding some curves to the driveway, so it's not a direct shot in and out. Curves tend to slow people down, make them pay attention to what they're doing. And one of the benefits of this design is, it does add a sidewalk from the shopping center back up to Elm Street, where there's never really been one. The only sidewalks are public out on Freshwater Boulevard. So, I know we're trying to reinforce pedestrian sidewalks along Elm Street. And this gives an opportunity to introduce a sidewalk back to that location as well. And again, while there's some concerns about traffic difficulties on Elm Street, potential for additional accidents on Elm Street, I don't think anybody would argue that if you add driveways to any road. You can always discuss the potential for additional accidents. But you gotta balance that amongst, you know, all the needs. And I think it's safe to argue, as I was saying, is that, I know I use the shopping center all the time. I go to Home Depot far too many times. To get to this area, you know, this retail area has always been sort of an afterthought at the north end, primarily because of the access. And again, to get to those areas, and Friday's, if you're coming from the Elm Street corridor, you have to go, you have to drive through half the shopping center to get back to this location. So, there's a lot of internal traffic concerns with that to balance. And that would be, that would be one of the arguments, is by giving an opportunity for some of the traffic on Elm Street, particularly coming from the highway, to gain nice, quick... to gain nice, quick, safe access into this portion of the center, you eliminate them from driving around the internals of the shopping center to get back to this location. I think at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Scott Hesketh from our office. He's our traffic expert, and he has some thoughts and discuss a report that he's prepared.
Thank you, David. Again, for the record, Scott Hesketh with the firm of F.A. Hesketh and Associates. We submitted a traffic statement dated October eighth, two thousand and nineteen for the commission's review. As you can, as you can see on the plan, we're proposing, as David said, a right-in and right-out driveway to Elm Street Route two twenty. In order to review how that driveway would operate, a recent approval for Panera Bread, which was approved by this commission and submitted to the State Traffic Administration, had traffic volume data in it. We use that traffic volume data as the background for this particular application. It's projected that the site has approximately six hundred and sixty-four trips into and out of the site during the morning peak hour, around eighteen hundred and seventy-eight trips on afternoon peak hour, and two thousand six hundred and eleven trips on a Saturday peak hour. We project that that traffic comes to and from the site, approximately fifty percent to and from the north on Freshwater Boulevard, fifty percent to and from the south on Freshwater Boulevard. And the traffic basically splits itself onto Elm Street, thirty percent to and from the west and twenty percent to and from the east. If we present a traffic, a new driveway at this location, we expect that half of that traffic coming from the west would utilize this driveway as opposed to using Freshwater Boulevard and the driveways there. And that fifty percent of the traffic exiting the site destined to the east on two twenty would utilize this driveway as well. So based on those traffic volume projections, we're projecting that we'd have maybe fifty-seven entering and twenty-eight exiting movements during the morning peak hour at this location, hundred and forty-one entering and ninety-four exiting movements during the afternoon peak hour, and one hundred and ninety-eight entering and one hundred and twenty-three exiting movements during the Saturday peak hour. And reviewing those traffic volumes, with the traffic volumes on Route two twenty, we project a level of service A during the morning peak hour and levels of service B during the afternoon and Saturday peak hours for the traffic exiting this particular driveway. Now, we are proposing right turn movements in and right turn movements out, which are the the most innocuous movements. Yes, are we adding a new driveway to Route two twenty? Certainly. But right turn movements are the easiest and safest movements to make. The driveway, as it's been laid out here, has got twenty-four-foot pavement width, twelve-foot lanes for both entering and exiting traffic. We're proposing a raised median island on the approach to Route two twenty to prohibit and discourage left turn movements. We've got appropriate signage to discourage left turn movements as well, both entering and exiting the site. So we believe that the right turn movements can be made efficiently and safely at that location. I know that the report's been submitted to staff and the comments have been received this evening. I know the police department was concerned about accident data. We did review accident data. We didn't present it, but we'll be happy to provide that to the police department and to the commission for their, for the next public hearing if we get to that time period. We looked at the accident data between Freshwater Boulevard and the St. James or the Community College. Looking at traffic volume, accident data west of Freshwater Boulevard is probably not all that appropriate as there are no unsignaled intersections along that section of roadway. They're all signalized intersections with the exception of the right turn in at the, at the gas station. So we're not proposing any left turn movements here, so looking at signalized intersections, the left turns doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But the accidents between Freshwater Boulevard and the Community College, there's only one accident over the last three years that involved a right-turning vehicle, and that occurred at the intersection of Palumba. There were no accidents at the residential streets or involving the Five Guys facility. So all, most of the accidents, the accidents that did occur were rear-end accidents at signalized intersections or involved left turn movements out of, out of unsignaled driveways. There were no accidents across the site frontage here, which which would have any relevance to right-hand movements into or out of side streets as as there are none at this particular location. The accidents which occurred here across the site frontage were rear-end accidents toward in the westbound direction toward Freshwater Boulevard. So we will prepare that information in tabular form and provide the data for the police chief to look at. I'm not sure, hopefully he'll allay some of his concerns, and we'll also provide it to the commission. Hopefully it'll allay some of your concerns if you have any.
One question. Did you receive, you got the email from John Kabibow about the elevation detail, the grading and the cross-section.
We did at the hour noted in that email.
Okay.
Yeah, so today.
It was on our desk today, so.
Us too.
All right.
Just before we were on our way here.
Because I have a question in terms of, you know, I travel not necessarily that much on Elm Street, but I travel a lot on Hazard Avenue. And the Stop &amp; Shop has a similar right-in and right-out. They actually have a left-in, but it's, they have a divided median and an easement lane. So, you know, I like the way that that, you know, right-in and right-out works because of the fact that they actually have a lane where you can ease yourself into turning right so that you're not necessarily stopping traffic as you're going straight to take a right-hand turn. So that you sort of, you know, leave the actual, you know, driving area to take a right-hand turn. So a lot of people slow down and, you know, the, you know, you get frustrated when somebody's taking a right-hand turn and they almost come to a stop to take a right-hand turn. And if the fact that if you had an ease-over lane where you eased yourself over and then took the right into this, you know, plaza would make a lot more sense. And that's the same thing that they have at the Stop &amp; Shop where, you know, they don't prohibit traffic from traveling at a normal rate if you're going to take a right-hand turn. That you actually ease over into your own lane to take that right-hand turn. So I definitely would think that you might want to sort of think about that scenario. Because the other thing that they also have is that they extended their raised median just about the entire length of the drive or far enough up the drive where somebody just can't scoot over into the other lane to actually, you know, shoot over. If they don't see anybody coming, you know, you just shoot across and you scoot into, you know, take a left-hand turn. So by having that divided median extend up the drive for a distance, it would prevent that type of thing happening. So I think that that should also be a consideration.
Does the state DOT have to approve this? They do.
Yes.
My concern is, as Rich was saying, Stop &amp; Shop is a left-in, a right-out. And.
Right-in.
It is both? I'm just concerned that when people start accelerating from the stoplight at five o'clock at night, they're starting to move down Elm Street. You're going to get somebody who is going to creep up to make that right-hand turn. And that is going to create such a problem. I, it's so close to the intersection. You know, I have to agree with our public safety officer's comments. I mean, if you were to make it, you know, one-way only, you know, an exit out, I mean, that might help, but just those people coming out of that intersection at five o'clock at night, they want to go home. And, you know, you're going to get people who are going to pull in there. Like you said, I'm at Home Depot four times a day. I'm in your plaza all the time, and, you know, it's a great plaza. And I would think you'd want people to pass by the stores. And yes, I get frustrated when people are walking to go into, you know, the different stores to get to Home Depot so I can get in the contractors, get in and out. But that's what you want to do to feed the plaza, the rest of the residents. And, you know, if that would do nothing for me because I'd come in backwards to Home Depot and the contractors goes the other way out, I mean, pulling out on Elm Street if I was going that way, I might use it. But I'm just more concerned about the good of everybody who's heading down Elm Street at five o'clock at night. I mean, I'd be okay with an exit only, a right exit only. But I just, I don't even see the state DOT approving this. I don't. But that's not my call. That's their call. I wish they had made the call before we do. You know, so we're not wasting their time.
I think Ken said a lot of what I was thinking, but I read the police section in the comments, and I didn't see anything about traffic data for accidents. I'm sure that you were asked for that, but he feels strongly that it's going to create another hazard on Elm Street. And he says, while he's not keen on any curb cut here on Elm Street and would still have concerns, a one-way entrance only with no exit at this location would be more palatable than the current proposal. I would have to save further comments on that matter if and when such a proposal is made. And like Ken said, you do want to have people go by your stores. I understand what you're saying about that corner is hard to keep tenants, but I really have to err on the side of safety and concerns of the public safety officer.
Charlie?
Yeah, that's what I was reading. He was not saying that to have an exit out. He was saying have a one-way in there, no exit out at all. Which would, just a one-way in might solve your problem somewhat because they could still go out the other way on Freshwater, and they don't have to look for the place to get to the store by going in that way. Like they, for the, was it Five Guys? Not Five Guys, the restaurant there. They could go right in the right turn, like you said, and come right up into the driveway like you'd want it.
Friday's.
TGI Friday's.
Yeah, TGI Friday. But the exit is probably more problem than the entrance, especially if you put the lane in that Rich suggested where you could, you know, defer traffic out of the main flow and going in that way. But coming out, they'd be trying to charge into going traffic. That, I think, would be more difficult than getting in. The other thing is the fire department wasn't too thrilled with the island because they said it could damage your equipment. You know, whereas the police department wanted the island. I don't know which one you're going to satisfy with that one.
I think if the lanes are wide enough and they can demonstrate to the fire department that.
Twenty-five-foot lane there, they should be able to get their ladders in and stuff.
Nick?
I have some concerns about the safety. First, anybody leaving Freshwater and heading east that's a right turn is going to be accelerating when people are decelerating to make the turn into the shopping plaza for the entrance. That's a conflicting movement. That could be a problem. The other thing is Stop &amp; Shop has a raised median on Hazard Avenue. I don't see that here, and that deflects and deters illegal turns. But we have a no-left turn into the mall where Friendly's is, and just tonight I saw somebody making a left turn. We have right turn only into the gas station and into the freight entrance, the service entrance to the plaza, and into Five Guys, and I've seen people headed west on Elm Street making left turns. So designating no-left turn isn't going to be a deterrent. Additionally, I travel Elm Street nearly every day, and between three and five, it's almost bumper-to-bumper in both directions. And the left turn lane headed west on Elm Street frequently backs up to a point where the last few cars are in the travel lane. So this is a very congested area, and I have concerns about this.
Anybody else?
No.
All right. I, you basically have all said what I've been thinking because I too travel down Elm Street and have experience, like Nick said, heading west at that light, being in the travel lane, waiting to make that left turn down Freshwater. And to be pulling out when you're heading east into traffic that's accelerating, I don't think that would be the best opportunity for any of us. And because people don't pay attention, I see more texting than I should because I do travel a lot in my job. People are texting. They're not paying attention. It's not like it was twenty years ago before we had cell phones. So I. I know, but it just, I see it and I see them, and the next thing you know, they're in another lane and they're not paying attention and they're slamming their brakes on, so. I have concerns, and I don't think the state will. I don't know what the state will do. I really don't, so, but those are my concerns with the texting and the congestion in that area.
Open it to the public?
Huh?
Open it to the public?
It's a site plan review, so we don't have to. So.
Oh, my God.
Okay, so, gentlemen, you have anything else you'd like to add to this?
I guess we'd ask that if, it sounds like the general consensus between what the police have said and what you've said tonight, if we were to eliminate the right-out, that would help to form a better right-in only. It would avoid having people be able to make the lefts because we can make it more curved. It would certainly be wide enough for the fire department to make their turns with the trucks. They wouldn't have to be concerned about a raised median, and the police wouldn't be concerned about a median. And so I ask if the commission would favor the right-in only if we were to propose eliminating the right-out.
My concern.
Oh, thank you. I was just, I didn't even think about what Linda said about accelerating out when you take a right to get in with the flow of traffic. I wonder how many feet it is between the right turn out of the Freshwater and the people coming out on the proposed driveway.
It's approximately two hundred and seventy-five feet.
Okay. Any?
Like I said, my concern is more the right-in than the right-out because the right-out, you're backing the people up into your own plaza. It's, I mean, that's on you guys. But when you do a right-in, you're going to have the congestion still forming on Elm Street that's going to back up to Freshwater, which is already, I mean, it's backed up three hours every day, non-stop. And by adding a right-in there, you've got somebody stepping on their brakes, slowing down to five miles an hour, and you're slowing, and then you're going to get to people trying to cut over to go around them. It's just, I'm more in favor of the right-out than the right-in. So I don't want to give you a false hope that I'm going to support a right-in because it does not look well. But if, what Richard said earlier, if you were to propose an additional lane, a right-turn lane, like in the breakdown on Elm Street, then you're moving the traffic out of the flow, I'm a hundred percent with that. But I don't know how far you want to go with this, and that's.
It's not even feasible, given the utilities, the number of poles that are there. We're literally right up at the edge of the curve.
You can't use the breakdown lane that's.
There is no breakdown lane. It's actually grass.
Oh.
It's misleading. It's misleading. Because that would have been the first thing we proposed.
Because then you're moving them out.
Absolutely.
So you agree in.
Well, what I don't agree with is that the free flow of traffic making that right turn will slow as much as you anticipate because of the gentle curve that we'll be able to provide because that's showing two lanes, and we'll be able to limit it down to one lane and really improve the curve. Visibility there is excellent. So I think cars will just move right into the center. I don't think there'll be that kind of backing up. And cars are still accelerating from that light. They won't be traveling that fast yet.
What is, I'll entertain a motion.
Where are we here?
I'll go, I'll take the positive route. Madam Chair?
I'll go, I'll take the positive route. Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the draft resolution for site plan review 1796-130 Elm Street, as prepared by the planning department with the 24 conditions that are indicated. I believe there's, you know, two site-specific conditions, plus there's some, I guess, concerns from the engineering department that would also have to be addressed.
Second?
Any, okay, any further discussion?
Yes, I think we should put a condition that it's just right-in, not right-out. Just right-in, with the whole width still there.
Do we want just right-in or just right-out? Because if, as Kenny said, you're backing up traffic on a state road that already has a lot of traffic, you're going to back it up further to make that right-in. And, but the taking the right-out, you're stopped, you can't go if there's a car coming. So you could ease into the traffic as there's an opening. So when the light turns red at Freshwater, you can make your right-out, and that way there, you wouldn't have to worry about it. So that...
Motion's made and seconded.
Okay, further discussion?
Just clarification. Commissioner Ladd made his comments that it would be right-in only.
Right.
So I don't know if there was a second or discussion.
We were just discussing before the...
We haven't decided whether we're going to...
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
Probably get a consensus on in or out.
All right, do we want a right-out or a right-in?
We only want one either way.
One or both. I...
Or none.
Or none. So...
Vote to motion that's on the table.
All right. All those in favor of making a curb cut on Elm Street for the site plan 1796? All of those against? Okay, 060.
Is there any way that the Freshwater could be widened? No?
I don't know.
I was just curious.
I don't know that widened Freshwater or make, where you can go out where that right turn out onto Freshwater by Fridays?
How would that help? How would that help? The key is to get customers in.
Yeah, I...
They'll find their way out. They can make a right onto Freshwater next to TGI Fridays.
I'm just saying, from Freshwater where that right turn only to Elm Street, where you have, you have, you put a median, right? No, no, down, down, down. Right, where you, because I always go out that way when I go to Home Depot, and I, too, am in Home Depot more than I should be, but, yeah. So if you could do something there, I don't know. That might be...
You're talking, cut the median on Freshwater?
Right.
So you can go right or left.
Right. And that way there, you're bringing traffic right there.
I agree.
So, but I'm just...
That would cause backup on Elm Street, too.
Again. I don't know. I don't know. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Secretary, could you read the legal notice for public hearing 2957?
The Infill Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, November 14, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Infill Street, Infill, Connecticut, concerning the following application: Public Hearing 2957, 125 and 135 Hazard Avenue, lots 69 and 70, special permit application to construct two new medical office buildings with associated parking lots and driveways, George K. Karanian owner applicant, map 65, lots 69 and 70, BP zone.
Okay, gentlemen, names?
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick Lefakis.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Names and address, sir?
Joseph Flynn, attorney for the applicant, 53 Mountain Road in Suffield.
Nat Srinath, 11 Royal Manor, Summers, Connecticut, engineer.
George Karanian, 180 Marburn Drive, Suffield.
Okay, gentlemen, please tell us what your, your plan is.
Thank you. My name's Joe Flynn, and I'm representing Dr. Karanian.
Oh, excuse me. It's like the, the mic.
Leave the mic. You're on television, so.
Yeah. Make sure the... There you go.
Is that better?
That's better.
And Dr. Karanian owns two lots on, located on the northeast side of Hazard Avenue, and they're in the business professional zone. And the lots are over, just over 30 acres. And they're located, I would say, about midway between, on the west, where the Hazard Avenue intersects with Palumba. And as I said, midway between that and where Hazard Avenue intersects with Oldfield. And we're seeking approval for two buildings, one on each lot, for the proposed medical or professional office space. And as far as we can tell, our application's in accordance with all the design standards and use requirements. I just want to show one page.
Take the mic with you. There's a handheld mic.
I just was, is this on?
Yeah, you kind of have to hold it close.
Okay, I just wanted to reference to Sheet 5 of the plans because it gives you what I consider to be the best overview of the lot. And I think it's relevant because the two lots have a brook running through the parcels that starts in the north-westly corner of the property and runs southeasterly down to the easterly boundary. And no development is being proposed north of that brook. In fact, it's encumbered by a conservation easement, just over 16 acres. So there'll be no disturbance in those wetlands and no disturbance in any of the growth on that section. And it's just a, I think, the best sheet to provide for an overview of what the overall parcel looks like. This is Sheet 6. You can also look at Sheet 14 for what the overview looks like with the two proposed buildings and the parking lots. So the site plan went through the customary reviews with at least two formal meetings with the various departments. And as far as we know, all the recommendations were incorporated into the plans. Mr. Srinath is here tonight to address any engineering concerns you might have. I think that his narrative that he provides is a good summary of the basic engineering concerns. We do have a staff report. It was dated November 14, but I got it maybe two days ago. There was one submission by the traffic safety officer. I did email a letter today to the planning department addressing those concerns, essentially incorporating the two omissions that he cites about the crosswalk and a signage on the fire lane, and then confirming that the roadway, the roadway and then the cul-de-sac will, are private, not public. In regards to any speed limits signage, I was under the impression that we, that would be dictated by some municipal authority, so that's why it wasn't on the plan. So that, I just asked if that letter, which was emailed over, be incorporated into the record. But in terms of the site plan, we believe that we comply with 9.10 of your, of your regulations, specifically because it's a business professional zone. 5.50 regulates this application. There will be one single curb cut servicing both lots, which I think is explicitly recommended in that section. And in terms of sight lands and visibility, you're familiar with that area of Hazard Avenue. It's very flat and straight, so we didn't see any problems there. As I said, the parcel's pretty large, and so in terms of circulation and parking, there would be no off-street parking concerns. And in regard, we did note that there were specific landscaping requests about adding a certain number of trees per lot in the areas that were developing, and there's obviously no problem in that regard.
Sorry?
Linda must have hit it.
No.
Linda must have. It's under your desk.
Oh, maybe I did. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You didn't even know it was there, did you?
No.
Now we know.
Now we know.
So did the crooks.
I may hit it after the vote. I don't know.
It works.
In terms of the special-use component of the application, obviously, we feel that the public health, the safety of the area is maintained primarily because the application fits so neatly into the criteria you have in that section. Obviously, the uses explicitly comply with Article 5, and we meet all the coverage percentages that are outlined in this section. As I stated, all the fire and police concerns have been incorporated. In regards to harmony with the neighborhood, the use is consistent with what you've already allowed to be developed there. I think on the east side of our parcel is open MRI, woman's health and primary spine. And then across the street is the Trinity Health campus, I think the Johnson Memorial Center. And the reason I started with the first map is because, yes, we, the northerly boundary of our piece does a, an R-44 zone. But that is why I tried to outline for you where the northeastern quadrant of our parcel is conserved by the conservation easement. So we don't think that that's going to have any negative impact on the R-44 usage. So we're here to address any further concerns you have. I thought that the staff report did a very thorough job of addressing the application.
Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, how many offices, how many medical businesses will be in each of the buildings?
We don't have anything specific in regard to a potential fire yet. Dr. Karanian intends to market the property, hopefully with the approval for those buildings, as he's, you know, practiced for many decades here, and that's what his circle of connections are. And he feels there's demand for that, so we decide...
So it would be just medical-type businesses?
Medical or professional.
Yeah.
Whatever is explicitly allowed under Article 5.
Okay. Would that make a difference in the parking at all, Lori, if it's different types of businesses?
If it did, we would review it and bring it back if need be.
Thank you. Rich?
I guess I only have one comment in terms of, you know, it appears that you don't have enough snow piling, shedding areas in terms of, you know, they're relatively small and they're sort of localized and, you know, try to get the snow. Not that it matters because you've got so much open space and so much, you know, potential for the localized, you know, snow, snow plowing that, you know, I don't think you have a problem getting rid of the snow, but it just seemed a little...
Would you want more markings on the plan as to...
You know, and possibly, you know, I would envision that, you know, if somebody's plowing it, they're going to sort of ease the snow into, you know, undeveloped areas, you know, rather than try to corral it and push it into these discrete internal corners that you have located on your plans.
And we could make it a site approval, a condition of approval if, and defer to the town engineer's placement of that, whatever, you know, where he wants it piled.
Yeah, you know, he said, it's not a big concern because of the fact that you have a lot of periphery that you could actually utilize, then...
Yeah, it is uplands, too.
Yeah, and you won't be really, and then it's all just going to be sort of a gradual transition through a grassy swale, and it will get, you know, remediated or cleansed, whatever it needs to be. But that's the only comment I had. You know, because I guess, you know, it took me a while to figure out what you were doing in terms of your drainage, so. But once I figured out your drainage, it made sense that you're taking all your drainage from the main two lots and taking them back to that detention base in the back.
Detention base on Lot 2, you're right.
Right. And it wasn't exactly clear what you were doing. And then you have the two in the front entryway that are just going into the swale along the roadway.
Right.
So in that sense, you know, that does make some sense. Thank you.
Anybody? Kenny?
Do you have any intent of trying to get the state of Connecticut to put a light up on Hazard Avenue? I've learned to defer to the state of Connecticut DOT. I don't, you know, basically abide by their recommendations. I don't advocate. I just have them come in and do their job. So I'm not sure what they're going to... Oh, you're not? No. But you guys aren't asking for one? Oh. Are we going to do it, or are we going to have, we're going to wait for the applicant to attend? I just look at Hazard Avenue. That's probably one of the only open stretches without traffic or lights on it. So I'm saying you don't need one, but that's why I'm asking if you planned on putting one there for your own...
Nat Srinath here. This project has been going on for almost three, three years. And more than a year ago, I sent a complete set of drawings, or two sets, to the state DOT in Newington. And they didn't have any adverse commerce comments. The only comment was I had designed the drainage for 10 years, and they wanted 25-year, for the culverts only. So they did not say that that entrance is bad, we don't want it, or anything like that. And generally, they do not give a comment when it is not approved by the town. But somehow I took the chance and sent it, and this is the comment I got. And they have their regular procedure to review the plans, and we know that we have to do more work because not far east of our entrance, there is a traffic sign and a light and everything there. So I don't know what they would want us to do. We'll have to provide a report from the traffic engineer on whether what they want and satisfy them before we can do anything to the entrance there.
Right. But to answer your question, we are not contemplating one. Thank you. That's right. We will defer, we will defer to the state. Obviously, right. You have to do what they say, but... I drove it three or four times yesterday, and that was, yeah, I didn't think so. I'm all set.
Okay, anybody else? Then I will entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone in the public like to speak for or against? Anyone in the public for or against? Anyone in the public for or against? Hearing nobody? I'm closing public hearing, PH 29... with the 28 conditions indicated, with the two site-specific indication, site-specific conditions indicated also.
Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? 7-0-0.
Six.
Six, zero, six, I'm sorry, six. We can't count tonight.
Thank you for your time. Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, that would have been eight. There was two of them. Okay. You'd like to read the?
Yes. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, November 14, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, XSP 19-08, 155 Raphael Road, Site Plan Review Application for the Site and Building Improvements for John F. Kennedy Middle School, MAP 68, Lot 149, R-88 Zone. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
There.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Welcome, names, addresses, please. I know.
I think they want to use the screen.
Oh, yeah, you want to use your screen, too, so.
No, it's the TV out, people out, and watching it at home can't hear you.
We get to see it here, but people watching at home won't see it.
Hello, testing. You hear me okay?
Yep.
Members of the commission, good evening. My name is Bruce Kellogg, J C J Architecture, and we are pleased to be here this evening to present to you our documents for renovation of the JFK Middle School. With me this evening on our team, I have Jim Hoagland from J C J, Katie Gagnon from Langdon, our site civil engineer, Chris Seikle from Construction Solutions Group, who's the owner's rep, and Christine O'Hare from J C J. Just as a little introduction before they do the presentation, the school, JFK Middle School, you may recall passed a referendum a year ago. It was for what the state calls renovate as new project. What that means is everything that's done in that school is eligible for your reimbursement rate for the town. So obviously, that's really good news. So most of the school, while being a renovation, there is a small addition in the auditorium as a highlight. The fields that are part of the school presently are going to remain, but we're going to reconfigure the fields. The parking lots, as you see them, are essentially staying as parking lots, we're doing some reconfiguration. And then the site circulation, we're ramping the site circulation so it works better. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim and Katie to talk you through the engineering pieces and the building pieces that you're interested in.
So like Bruce said, I'm Katie Gagnon, a professional engineer with Langdon Engineering. We're the site civil engineer on the project. So just to sort of acclimate you, I'm sure you're familiar, but this is the existing JFK site, so the building's on the west half. It's a really, really big piece of property. We're really just looking at about 16 acres is the project area, so this is only a portion of the site, but it's on the left with Raphael Road as the westernmost boundary, and then the parking lots, north and south, Ring Road and the fields. Most of that staying, like Bruce said, we're just improving it. So this is our proposed site plan. It's about a 14,250,000 square foot building addition on the northeast side. Can't point, but it's the shaded part in between those two pie pieces. We're also maintaining essentially the same parking areas. We're redoing the parking lots and increasing the parking from 270 parking spaces to 339. That exceeds zoning requirement, but has been requested for, you know, event purposes with the auditorium. The building entrances, the main entrance is on the south part of the building, and that will be where visitors and the primary entrance during the day. On the north side, by the larger parking lot, is a second entrance for like the auditorium. Additionally, on the site, we have some new landscaping, new, sorry, I feel weird on the computer. Okay, some new sidewalks. We have an outdoor classroom on the northern side of the building, as well as an outdoor eating area off the cafeteria for some improvements for the students. Bruce said as well that we're renovating the playing fields, so we are going to install a new softball and baseball field, a multipurpose field that size for soccer, as well as three practice fields, and we're relocating the two existing basketball courts down in that part as well with a small storage shed. We're improving pedestrian circulation through the site as well. We have two raised crosswalks through the Ring Road to make it easier for pedestrians to get from the school to the playing field, so one of them is right outside the gym if they were going to go over the fields during gym class, or just in general, transversing the site that you're a little more protected from vehicles. We're maintaining the same, the existing driveways, the four curb cuts on Raphael Road, and they're all about the same size. In fact, in any, most instances, we're making them a little bit smaller, and today, they don't have curb, it's just edge of pavement, but putting in curb to define the driveways a little bit better. The plan complies with all the zoning bulk requirements. We're also improving the landscaping on the site. Today, it's mostly just grass. We are putting in new, more sustainable, drought-resistant native grasses to reduce maintenance, and we are installing more trees. We have 23 trees along the frontage to comply with the zoning requirement there, as well as 60, or 96 trees in the parking and the across the site, where 68 are required. So that should sort of improve the aesthetics. Just to note, all the trees are proposed to be deciduous. It's a little bit better and safer in a school setting that no one can really hide behind So that's the site plan. So to go through the circulation and the traffic, so today, the bus loop is so awkward, is there anybody that, does the mouse work? If I do this, can you see the mouse on the screen?
Yes.
This whole time, I could have been doing, sorry. Okay, so starting, the bus loop will be where it's shaded in gray and with the pink hatch, so the buses will all enter from the north central driveway on Raphael Road, go around to the back of the site, and starting around here during the morning and afternoon would be bus only, essentially turn into a one-way drive, and along this pink area here would be where the buses stop to discharge and load students. In the afternoon, they would just queue up along the Ring Road until they could pull forward. It's a one-way exit out on the south driveway for the buses to leave at the end of the day or in the morning. Parents and ADA vans would come into the south middle driveway, and there is a driveway along the edge here where they could queue and come around here. This is the parent drop-off here. Van and then ADA accessible drop-off is this blue area here, and they would all exit back out of the same driveway they came in. That would be the same in the afternoon as in the morning. And then we do have emergency access to the fields through this pathway here, so ambulance, fire truck could get down there. We did a full traffic study for the project. We made assumptions on number of buses and parent drop-off in based on enrollment numbers increasing. We don't, we understand there's no going, there's going to be no increase in buses to the site, but that we do expect parent drop-off will proportionally grow with the number of students. Even anticipating all of those trips, we don't see any negative impact to the adjacent roadway for the project. A few of the intersections, of the 17 traffic movements we looked at, at the four intersections, only three of the 17 go down by any level of service, and in those cases, it's from B to C, and C is still considered an acceptable level of service. Additionally, the queue lengths only increase by up to two cars in any place which can be handled on either the driveways internal to the site or in the road. To quickly go through the drainage, we are maintaining the existing drainage patterns on the site, so the west side of the site and sort of the field area overland flows into the wooded area in the back and ultimately goes into the Scantic River. The west side with the school goes into a existing pipe that flows south, and I believe ultimately discharges to the river as well. We're increasing impervious slightly in the school area with our new locks and plaza areas, so we are showing a new stormwater basin to offset just that increase in impervious a little bit. We're meeting all the peak flows through the 50-year storm as required by the zoning regulations, and we do have a water quality unit upstream of the basin to help with water And just to quickly touch on lighting, we are proposing all-new site lighting on the site. It's zoning compliant, LED, dark sky, full cutoff, 25-foot poles in the parking lot, and then closer to the building, more pedestrian-scale 10-foot poles, and then also some lit bollards in that area as well.
Once again, for the record, James Hoagland with J C J Architecture, I'm the project architect for this. We've been working with the town for quite a while, working back to the referendum. I'm going to give you a quick oversight of the internal workings. This is a predominantly internal renovation job. We're doing very little to the outside of the building. There's some meaningful architectural interventions on the outside, but, you know, 85% of the work is happening inside. Some of the site-related moves that we've made are really educationally driven. We were, we're looking at renovating this school with all 1,200 students in the building while we're doing it, so there's a critical phasing to this that is going to be super important to how we renovate things. And with that approach, we actually began moving some big program spaces around within the building, which then created opportunities for new entries. So I'll show you a couple of images as we get a little farther into this, but the big moves that we made, and for those of you that are familiar with JFK, the existing pool space is going to go away. We're going to convert that to a new cafeteria. We have some volume inside there, and it's scaled appropriately size-wise, which, which means we're also moving a kitchen to that portion of the building. We're occupying one of the old locker rooms and renovating that to a kitchen. Now, the former cafeteria gets renovated to the new front door for the school, and that actually makes us, it gives us the ability to consolidate all of the administrative offices, the nurses' office, guidance, all of, all of the academic support spaces that are currently sprinkled throughout the building and spread, we're able to centralize in that one location, and that's going to become the new front door for the school. So any visitors that are coming will come to that door. The existing auditorium sits in the middle of the school. It's really the heart of the building, the center hub, and for community uses, community has to pass through the building to get to that auditorium. Currently, it's a little undersized, inappropriately located, so we're proposing to build a new auditorium on the north end or north side of the building, which now gives us the opportunity to create a public entry, a community entry, that will get the public into the new auditorium, the existing gymnasium, and since we've relocated the cafeteria to that portion of the building, a single public lobby will now accommodate all of those larger community functions. We're going to fully renovate all three of the two-story classroom wings. Currently, sixth grade occupies one, seventh grade occupies another, and eighth grade. So that becomes critical in the phasing and how we're going to move students around the building as, as construction proceeds as well. And then one of the last things that we do is we go into the existing auditorium once the new one is built, and we renovate that whole center hub into technology spaces. So we're now introducing robotics labs, material testings, testing labs, and that becomes learning on display right in the middle of the school as opposed to a big dark space, the former auditorium. So just as a, as a general overview, I think those big moves began to introduce, dictate what we're doing on the outside of the building. And just to kind of give you an overview, the pink highlighted area is all of the new construction. That's about 18,000 square feet or so. That includes the new auditorium and the public lobby and a few small support spaces, and then all the blue spaces are the ones that we anticipate being renovated. The second floor of the floor plan, you just see the, the upper portion of those three classroom wings that I had alluded to. So as part of the planning and zoning process, we began looking at how this building was transforming. Currently, the building does not have air conditioning. It's going to be a fully air-conditioned school, so we have some big rooftop units going on, on the upper portion of a couple of the wings. So with our 3D modeling capabilities, and we've been working with the building committee, it was critically important for us to screen all of that new equipment and make sure that it met all the regulations in your eyes as well. So we've gone to great lengths of 3D modeling the entire building, and this gives you a little hint of some of the interventions. We're actually showing the plaza, which will become the new front door to the school for any visitors that are coming during the day. You can see it's a one-story wing, and our simple intervention is introducing a little canopy that then provides protection for visitors coming and going. It'll become a central point for pickup and drop-off of parents, and we anticipate most of the students passing in and out and through this door in the morning and then back out in the afternoon. And it falls nicely in line with how Katie explained the site circulation, too. There's a dedicated parent loop that pulls right up to the front door here. So just, just kind of an overview, but you can begin to see how we're proposing screening all the big rooftop units and as well as some of the smaller pieces that you can see on the roof. We submitted a couple, well, four sheets of exterior elevations, and we've documented all the roof screening, as well as what we think is going to be visible. The character of the building is not going to change dramatically. All of the existing windows are going to remain the same masonry opening size. We're obviously replacing them with highly efficient, energy-efficient windows. The third elevation that you can see down on this sheet is the new intervention. This is the new auditorium, and we're going to use some, some materials, cementitious products. We're doing some rain screen, which will give this portion of the building a much more modern look. We're going to match colors with the existing brick, and we've been working very closely with the building committee. We've rolled this out in the public, and we've gotten some very positive feedback just with the, the character of the new construction. The other thing that we, we do is go through looking at sight lines, you know, what, what you're actually going to see from Raphael Road, the neighbors to the north, and with our changes proposed to the building, we're very comfortable with all of the regulations and meeting initial interventions. So what, what we did was, at points around the building, we're providing a new public entry and a new main office entry, essentially. So we're proposing signage on the building. Right now, that's one of the, the issues that we heard from the end users, that visitors come to the building, they don't know where the front door is, and we felt that the architecture, it was important for the architecture to. much more modern look. We're going to match colors with the existing brick, and we've been working very closely with the building committee. We've rolled this out in the public, and we've gotten some very positive feedback just with the, the character of, of the new construction. The other thing that we, we do is, is go through, looking at sightlines, you know, what, what you're actually going to see from Raffia Road, the neighbors to the north, and with our changes proposed to the building, we're, we're very comfortable with all of the regulations and meeting, initial interventions. So what, what we did was, at points around the building, we're providing a new public entry and a new main office entry, essentially. So we're, we're proposing signage on the building. Right now, that's one of the, the issues that we heard from the end-users, that visitors come to the building, they don't know where the front door is. And we felt that the architecture, it was important for the architecture to speak, this is the front door. So we've, we've included all of our signage packages in, in the drawings that you have received, and they're all within the regulation of the special use permit guidelines. There, there is one sign out at the street right now. I think it's the, the standard sign for most of the schools around, around town. Right now, we're going to maintain that. At the last building committee meeting, there was some talk about what we might do to replace that and update it a little bit. So that may be something that we come back and have some discussions with you in, in the future. So these 3D renderings are very helpful, and I think this will help give you an idea of what the architecture is going to look like. This is just a view from the visitor parking, the new visitor parking lot, which would bring you right into the, the plaza for the front door at the main admin area. And then there, there's a second view here, the public lobby. So this is the other side of the building where the new auditorium is.
Sure.
Just a question. On the, the new entrance where it says "main office" on the building? Is that going to actually say that on the building?
We would like it to, yes.
Right, because that's going to count towards signage, isn't it, on the property? So that's something you want to consider when you're going forward.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and, and we have all that documented. You can see the, the scale here. The signage on that side is, is about 24 square feet of, of lettering, so it'd be a two-sided sign, and it's, it's within the, the special use permit guidelines of the 32 square feet. So that, that was certainly our intention. So going back to the public lobby, you can see how we've really opened up a plaza, helping to bring a lot of people into the auditorium and gymnasium. We're using some modern materials that we think mix well with the existing brick that's out there. And this, this is just a bird's eye view looking down to give you an idea of the scale and, and how people would flow from, from the north parking lot into all of the community use spaces that'll, that'll accommodate the big, big events. The other thing that we've done is we've, we've done all this 3D modeling, so we have a couple of drive-arounds of the building that, that we have found are incredibly helpful for the building committee. So it's, it's just a couple minutes worth of video, but I'll, I gotta click and move this a little bit. Okay, so this is a video of, of how people would move in through the bus loop. So this, this is one of the main entries. You're going to come in, all the buses loop all the way around the building. So I, I think this is a good way to give you a flavor of how all these pieces begin to fit together, the canopies at the end of each of the two-story classroom wings, the entry canopies that we're proposing, as, as well as how all the materials kind of tie together and give, give the, give the school a new, modern look. So all of those canopies are existing, the, the six columns and the, the horizontal piece are all existing. So we're adding some benches and some, some of the signage that, that I had alluded to at the end of each of the two-story classroom wings. This is a, a quick view of the outdoor learning area that Katie had alluded to. That'll be a fenced-in area, but it'll, it'll allow the students to come directly from the inside, spend some time outside, and some, some benches, and then head right back into the classrooms. Now we're working our way back around to what was the former tech ed wing, and it's actually the new arts wing. So all the new arts, art rooms and music rooms are located just off to the right there, and now you're beginning to see the volume of the new auditorium. And we're going to work our way around to the, to the public entry, and hopefully the video gives you a good, good idea of the scale and how that new public lobby is, is open and welcoming. It's going to be daylight. There's a lot of glass on that side of the building so that we get some natural daylight into the lobby that, that's shared by the gymnasium and auditorium. Now we're starting to work our way back around to the service portion of the building. This is where the new cafeteria and kitchen is going to be located. You're beginning to see some transformers and big generators on this side of the building. On the service area, you can see a, a truck backed in there. That's where all the deliveries would come in at that portion. That's, that's the kitchen area that it's immediately adjacent to. And then as we work our way around, some of the dumpsters are located just off to the, the left here, and you can see the three dumpsters at the corner of the building. And we'll slowly work our way back around to another two-story classroom wing, and then ultimately back to the, to the main entry.
That was the best wing in the whole school. White House. That's where cool kids were.
Now, we're, we're working back around towards the, the parent drop in the main office, but you can see the, the van drop. So these, this is where all the special ed vans come in, and there's a couple of self-contained rooms. They have their own entrance right at the backside of the building, right off that van loop. And there's a nice adjacency with the nurse, too. The nurse wanted to be close to those self-contained special ed rooms. She spends a lot of time back and forth between those, those spaces, taking care of those kids. And then we slowly work our way all the way back out to Raffia Road. So the one-way bus loop works in that manner. We have a second video that, that I'll show you of the inner loop for the parent loop. And coming into this project, it was really important to separate those two loops. It's one of the big safety concerns currently on-site. You have the parents coming in and the buses immediately adjacent, and currently, there's a bunch of orange cones lined up to separate those two. So I, I think we've reused as much of the existing circulation pattern as we can and effectively separated those, those two vehicular paths. Okay, so this video is a little bit shorter. So now you're coming into the, the parent loop, and you're coming in, you see the main office in the distance there, and then you immediately take a right. And so this is a, a one-way loop once you're into this portion of it. And this is where the, the parents will start stacking up in the morning to drop their kids off, as well as in the afternoon. Oftentimes, they get here, you know, well before the release of school just to queue up and be able to pick their child up. So you'll circle all the way around the visitor lot. We'll have some staff parking in, in the lot that you see here, probably main admin staff, so they can go right in the front door. But parents will loop all the way back around. So hopefully this gives you an idea of, you know, the, the level of site lighting. You can see all the pole light, pole lights in there. You'll see some bollards as we get a little closer and closer to the building. But now you're beginning to see, see the new main entry here. The van loop is off to the right for the special ed vans, and then this is the drop-off area for, for parents. There's a little pull-off lane, and so this becomes the new front door for the school. The main office is just off to the right of that canopy, and then you have a two-story classroom wing off to the left. So we're providing new plaza. That's where the flagpoles will be, you know, the, the new front door to the school. So we'll head back out to the road, but hopefully that helps you get an idea of, of how the architecture begins to pull together and what we're anticipating with, with the, the changes that we're making to, to the building. So that's all we have, so we'll open up to any questions that you have.
Nick?
Yeah, is there any place where it actually mentions John F. Kennedy instead of JFK?
Yes, um, yeah.
I saw JFK, and I knew who he was, but there are a lot of people who were born after the fact, and it'd be nice if they knew who he was.
Yep. Yeah, we, we had a conversation with the building committee about the, actually how the signage reads. We all refer to it as JFK, but all the signs will be spelled out, John F. Kennedy Middle School. So we're, yep, we're anticipating all that.
Thank you.
Jenny?
Um, quick question, and I'm going to be a pest about this. I didn't see anything about solar panels or any energy efficient. I know the windows are going to be energy efficient, but the high school didn't bother with solar panels. I'd like to see a few, if possible, on JFK. So is this something the building committee is looking into?
It is something that we looked into and discussed fairly early on. The initial referendum dollars wouldn't necessarily support an upfront cost and buying of it. We discussed the payback and the benefits of that.
But the state will let you lease it.
Yeah, and, and I know the-
No upfront dollars.
Right, and, and I know the town has some arrangements with some companies, and so conversations are ongoing, but currently, we're not buying panels to put on the roof for this project. I think it'll be accommodated in, in the near future, most likely.
Well, I hope so. I was very disappointed as a taxpayer and a citizen, and my child went through all the schools, and I went through all the schools, and it would be nice if we set an example for some of the energy efficiency that's going on in other towns. Just a thought.
I agree.
I'm sure the whole school's going to be all LED.
Yeah, so just as, just as an answer to the question, though, one of the parameters that we must meet on this is we have to meet the state stipulated what they call kinetic high-performance standards. So separate than just the solar piece, there's a whole series of steps we have to take to see if we can make this building as efficient as possible to meet or exceed those standards.
And, this is on right here. And just to clarify with the state grant, they don't allow for leases. So if, if we were to put solar panels on the roof, the project would have to purchase them and then install them and then work out the agreement that way. So it is something that is being considered, but it's-
Well, they always have fundraisers, maybe instead of pavers like they do in town, like they have on the town hall, that they, they can do a solar panel in, in memory of. I mean, you know, we have to be creative here.
Be creative.
And I'm going to be pissed about it.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
I, you know what I like?
It meets every requirement we have, and 80-something percent of it's inside of a structure that already exists.
Yeah, the one thing that I loved about this was identifying the main office. I remember, no, really, the first time I had to go there with my son, I wandered around, like, where am I going? And there was no way to identify anything, and I kind of felt stupid. Here, I'm supposed to be the mother, and I'm like, I don't know where we are. So, yeah, I'm glad that there's some signage. It does help. Go ahead.
Because I, I only have one question in terms of, the, the plans are very good. And, and the only question I have is that your drainage system A2, when it outlets to the existing catch basin, that, you know, it basically collects, you know, 90% of the volume of, you know, what's ever going, you know, on in area, you know, A, whatever area A is. But, but when you look at it, you know, I guess there's a 36-inch diameter pipe coming in from one direction and a 12-inch diameter pipe coming in from another direction, but it doesn't tell us what that, that outlet pipe is, the existing outlet pipe, in terms of, you know, obviously, it would have to be more than 36 di, 36-inch diameter, but, but the fact that it, it wasn't necessarily collecting this much volume of, of water It's, it's, you're, I mean, there's just not even a designation as to which catch basin I'm talking about, only because it's an existing one.
Yeah.
And, and I, I just have a concern that, you know, if you're dumping too much water in there and there, there's not enough capacity to get it out, and, you know, that it, it just be confirmed that, you know, it, it is bigger than what you're putting in there.
Yes.
Because just looking graphically, it looks smaller.
Yeah.
And, and if, if it was done graphically accurately, it should have been even bigger than the, the combination of the two that are coming in. And, and, but it doesn't look that way. And, and just to make sure that you, you dot your i's and cross your t's, and I'm sure you would do that, but you know, I would just, you know, sort of, you know, say, just double-check it just to be sure.
Noted.
Okay. Because the, the other question that I have is that I, I noticed that you have, you know, a lot of exposed ductwork on the roof. And, and I, I realize that you have space constraints so that there's not enough space to run everything, you know, under the area. But, but that's going to be far enough inboard and, and so that the sightline is, is never going to, you know, cross, you know, the, the possibility of somebody seeing something there.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the benefits of 3D modeling all this. Our mechanical engineers have modeled all of the ductwork accurately. We actually went through an extensive exercise where we looked at four or five different options mechanically as to how we're going to deal with all those ducts, because right now, there is no ductwork. There's no air conditioning. And by introducing those systems to the building, the, the existing floor-to-floor height is only 10 foot 10. So it's really tight. We looked at some options, putting ductwork in, in the building and running them down the corridor, and we're ending up with ceilings that were seven feet, seven feet two, and it just didn't work. So, yeah, I, I think we finally came back around to putting the ductwork on the, on the roof, and we, we've done it in the past, but we wanted to ensure that the ductwork stayed as low-profile off the roof as we could and kept it as, as low as we could. But the 3D modeling and, and as we did the drive-around, you really can't see the ductwork up, up on the roof.
Yeah, if, if it was there, it, it did not show. No, I, and I would have to agree. If, if it was, if it was a part of that, you know, modeling, then, then, you know, you could not tell it was there. And, and, and again, yeah, I don't think that you really had any other option if you're going to be air-conditioning an entire school. It, it had to go somewhere, and, you know, obviously, that was the only, the only place for it to go.
You could make a condition that any ductwork that is visible must be screened.
Yeah, but that, that's, that's really, you know, the thing is, it's so occasional, and, and it's only going to be a certain percentage of people who are actually going to know what it is and actually even see it. Most people just look at it, and, and it doesn't mean anything to them, so they just glance over it, so.
Yeah, and I, just understanding the extents of the ductwork, especially on the two-story classroom wings, if we were to screen all of the ductwork, you would end up with essentially a third floor. It would look like a third floor on the building. So I, I think what we've done by screening the big rooftop units and then keeping the ductwork as low-profile as possible, I, I think is going to be unobtrusive.
Because, because the other thing that you can do is you, you can actually paint it a, a neutral color that sort of blends with the sky, you know, and I, I know there's some certain grays that sort of, you know, just sort of blend in very well.
Disappear.
Disappear, so I think that. But other than that, I, you know, I don't have anything. Good job.
I do have one question.
Jenny?
When you did the 3D tour of the bus route, I noticed whoever was driving that bus went up on the sidewalk and ran over a student and then got back in the lane. So you may want to test them for some, you know, use.
We'll put them on the breathalyzer.
Okay. No, I saw that.
Right in the beginning.
Yeah, right in the beginning, they were on the sidewalk. I was like, that's not a good bus driver.
Great presentation.
Yes, very nice. Any other questions? I will entertain a motion.
Open to the public.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Anybody in the public like to speak for or against? Anybody? One more time, anybody? Seeing or hearing no one? Close the public hearing of, okay, Charlie, of X S P 19-08. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the resolution to approve public hearing X S P 19-08 dated November 14th as prepared by the planning department with the 27 conditions listed. And there are two site-specific conditions regarding lighting, so that, you know, if you maintain that, we're, we're happy, so.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just be very clear with the lighting at North Parking Lot.
It does say.
Okay.
Well, we have regulations that say it has to stay on the property.
Tell and feel high that.
Oh, I know, I know.
That's all I'm saying.
I know, I know.
The interior lights shining outside onto the outside property were definitely an issue, so that's why we've added that.
But I believe there's trees along that north side that, that will-
But in the wintertime, in the wintertime, so please, we get lots of visits on the other one.
All right. Ready to vote? All in favor? No? Okay.
Thank you for a great presentation. It made our job much easier.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good drawing, good, too.
Yeah. I know, I don't know. It was very easy. Okay. Any other business? Any correspondence? Commissioners' correspondence?
Actually, I was in the office. I already took my first one to--
You were in the office Saturday?
No, actually, Thursday.
Okay.
And took my questions to our zoning enforcement officer, and he said he would deal with it.
All right, okay. Anyone else? Any correspond--
I guess I don't have any correspondence, but I did notice that they're repaving that parking lot on South Road. And they had some islands that had some trees in them, and they sort of have reworked those islands a little bit, and the trees got removed. So, you know, I know we're working with, you know, a shopping center owner who's trying to improve the area for, you know, the potential, you know, use. And, you know, we don't want to burden him with, you know, more conditions, but, you know, possibly, we should remind him that he needs to replace some of that vegetation that was removed.
We reminded him upfront, so we'll make sure that he remembers.
Yeah, and we've noticed, too.
Better give a rip.
I think it's great. He did the roof like he said he was going to do. He did the paving like he said he was going to do.
He didn't commit to the paving because it was a lot of money, and they were just getting-- but they're doing it.
Yeah, he said--
And that's why I'm saying, I'll forego the vegetation for a while so he can get his money back.
Jumped on it.
The money they're putting in, I think you're--
Yeah, I think it's great.
I hope you're going to be happy with it, because I agree with you. They got to do something there. But for the-- when the snakes get loose, they're going to need a tree to climb in.
That's why I'm never going in that parking lot, just in case. Okay, thank you, Kitty, for that reminder. Okay, director's report?
So recently, I went to a CT Main Street Walkability workshop where they come up with, you know, little ideas, pop-ups, and flowers and things like that that help make the walking paths more friendly. So they had a lot of different ideas for just bringing everything to life as far as We did finally have the interviews for the consultants for the 190 and Elm Street corridors study with CROG this week.
Yay.
So I think we found great consultants, but they have to be vetted through the whole other process through CROG and DOT. So that might take about a month. So hopefully, that will get going soon. That's really-- oh, I'm working on the RFPs for the POCD and the zoning regulations. So, you know, once we get a new board, whoever's coming or going, that way, everybody new will still be on from the get-go. We did receive a resignation letter from Charles Doran. So he is not trying to re-up for the Planning and Zoning Commission. He said his last day will be December 12th. So you are fully aware of that? Guillermo was off because he is now, I believe, on the Board of Ed.
Do we know exactly how many years Charlie has been--
Almost 32.
That's what--
A long time.
It's a long time, and that knowledge is going to be missed, trust it.
Absolutely.
He knows things that happened and remembers things that happened 30 years ago, so.
Yeah.
I'm trying not to.
Anything else?
No, I don't think I have anything else.
Okay, administrative approvals for SPR 1792, 306 Hazard Avenue.
Didn't we approve that already?
I asked that question, and apparently, it was the wrong address. Because I asked Jen about that. We approved the smoothie shop, but it was the wrong address, so.
Okay. I'm not exactly sure why you see these anyway, but, I mean, similar use to similar use should really just be--
So I guess we need to--
Administrative, but something we could talk about.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize the administrative approval for SPR 1792.
Second.
Ooh.
Ooh.
I think Ken got that one.
All right, okay. All in favor? Okay, 600. Administrative approval for SPR 1794, 441 Hazard Avenue to remove an underground oil tank and replace it with a new one, so.
Aboveground one.
Aboveground one, so.
We can see the leaks better.
Yeah, and this is for Southern New England Telephone Frontier Communications, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the administrative approval for SPR 1794.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Administrative approval for SPR 1795, 28 Hazard Avenue, a request to remove and replace a menu board for a drive-through lane and add two new menu boards. And this is McDonald's, to remove three old boards.
I move that we allow administrative approval for SPR 1795, 28 Hazard Avenue.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? 600. And applications to be received?
There's one listed, but I do have an additional request for administrative approval.
Okay.
It's at-- hold on. It's One Depot Road. So basically, it's in the I-2 zone, and they want to put solar panels on the roof. And because it's in the I-2, you have to approve it.
Is that Tri-State?
Yes, Tri-State Trucking. And it's just solar panels on a flat roof.
They're trying to--
There's your solar panels.
There you go, solar panels, so.
Maybe they could lend them in memory of their original owner to the school.
All right. Okay, so we don't have to do anything.
Right, so just--
I'm asking if you would approve an administrative--
Yeah.
I mean, they'll give us the documentation for the next meeting, but--
I--
That is a site plan approval.
I move that One Depot Road be administratively approved for solar panels. And the planner can let us know how lovely they are once she gets all the information.
Second.
Okay.
Was that Nick?
That was Nick. Beat you by a second, Kitty, sorry. All in favor? Okay, 600.
Okay.
Okay. And the application?
Yet to be received is a public hearing, 2959, 114 Broadbrook Road, special permit application to renovate the existing building to provide space for up to four independent contractor uses. DNK Holding Company, Inc., owner Dane Thoroughgood, applicant, mat 103, lot 40, R44 zone.
Is that the one by the railroad tracks that has a couple buildings there?
I believe it's the building in the back that contaminated that.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'd like to know what they're doing as far as monitoring that contamination.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's why I asked, because I know there was pollution at one time, serious pollution. And the town was--
Mrs. Starr sold it?
Well--
Paying for bottled water.
Yeah, yeah, the town had to pay for the residents' water because it was contaminated. So, you know, it'd be good to get an update on that and to find out exactly what businesses would be going in there for pollution purposes.
Future.
Mm-hmm.
What, was public service water provided in that area? Or are they--
No, it's all well.
It's still unwell?
Yeah, and they have, like, reverse osmosis under their kitchen sinks.
Push your button. Sorry.
Holy smokes.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
All right, meeting adjourned.